This is NHTV2, North Haven Government Television, a service of North Haven Community Television. The following program is brought to you through the support of the Town of North Haven.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our April Board of Selectmen meeting. Happy Passover and Happy Easter to each and every one of you and your families. I'm Mike Frieda, North Haven's first selectman. Joined via telephone by our second selectman, Mr. William Piper, and our third selectwoman, Ms. Sally Buemi. Bill, I know you wanted to say a few words as to why you're dialing in tonight.
Thank you, Mike and Sally. I had to travel out of state actually for a very short period of time, actually less than a day. And I actually am fully vaccinated. I had my second Pfizer shot more than two weeks ago, actually about three weeks ago. So I'm clearly personally beyond any, you know, the initial phase of the first and second shot, you know, for its full effectiveness. But, you know, since I actually did travel out of state and even though I, everyone that I had close contact with was fully vaccinated, I thought that, you know, it was prudent and the right thing to do, especially based on how well everything is happening here in Connecticut in terms of getting everybody vaccinated. And we had the, you know, and if had to do this on one or two other occasions, that I should, instead of being at the meeting today, I could just effectively, I could be just as effective by calling in and not actually being there in person based on, you know, based on everything that's been going on, especially because things have been going in the right direction as we've opened up the vaccination process here in Connecticut. So thank you very much for, you know, understanding and allowing me to, you know, participate, I think, on our, you know, on our important monthly meeting remotely.
All right. Thank you, Bill. Thank you.
Yeah, you, you, okay, Bill, we miss you here, but we understand. You passed on Mike, and I just wanted to agree with your best wishes for Easter and Passover. We should also mention that in a couple of weeks Ramadan begins, so we should mention that since that will start before our next Board of Selectmen meeting. But I join you in wishing everyone a happy and safe holiday season. Thank you.
Okay.
So we can start.
Thank you. We'll start and stand for the tonight's Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, and we'll move to item number two on tonight's agenda, the approval of the minutes from the Board of Selectmen meeting from March 4th.
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll second those minutes.
All right, we have a motion, we have a second, any other discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item number three, I have a brief presentation tonight, ladies and gentlemen, and then we'll move into Sally, who asked to put two things on this agenda. One, I had planned to cover, but we'll certainly turn it over to Sally after this presentation. So if you would direct your attention to the screen, I wanted to review where we are right now in our budget process. So our public hearing will be Tuesday, April 6th, and that'll be via Zoom. And the Board of Education budget will be presented first, followed by the town government budget. You're going to see as we move through these slides that I fully intend to have a referendum this year, and at this point, we will have an in-person meeting at the high school on May 10th. That would be the second meeting on the budget. So as of right now, my intentions are to have that meeting in person. And I just want you to know that we're about 41% of people in North Haven that have had the first vaccine. So I feel that by next month, by the time May 10th rolls around with the number of vaccines and the allocations that are increasing, that'll be a time when it'll be a safe time for us to convene at the North Haven High School, provided there's nothing negative that happens in terms of this pandemic. But all indications are that we're moving forward in a very positive fashion. You know, a lot of times in this government, ladies and gentlemen, I spend a lot of time balancing safety and transparency. You know, this building here, we've had many people who've had COVID here. We've quarantined people many times. So I have to be cognizant of the safety of the public. And this is where we're at right now, April 6th being a Zoom, and again, fully intending to have an in-person meeting on the 10th. Now Valerie's spending a lot of time on this with me. I'm going to turn these next couple of slides over to Valerie to explain some of the process for April 6th. Valerie?
Thank you, Mike. Yes, we don't want anyone to be concerned that they will not be able to access this hearing, even though it will be electronic. The link to the Zoom will be on the website, and I have a little diagram on the screen now. That is the front page, the homepage of the Town of North Haven website, which you could find at northhaven ct.gov. On that homepage, you'll see I circled, there's a note, a block with a notice of public hearing. You would click on that. It'll bring you to another screen that then shows the link where it will once again say notice of public hearing. You click on that. And then now it brings you to the actual notice, and contained in the notice is a live link to the Zoom meeting. And it provides you with the meeting ID and the passcode. Now, if you do not have a computer and you do not have internet access and you wish to dial in, there is a phone number also provided, which is right here, And you can dial that number, and you will use the same meeting ID and passcode. You just punch that into your phone, and you will be brought into the meeting through your telephone, and then you will be able to listen and participate as Mike conducts the meeting, the hearing.
And during this meeting, I'll be managing, everyone will have a chance to ask a question. For those on Zoom, I will be acknowledging, we will ask you to put your questions into the chat box. I will be acknowledging each and every question that's in that chat box. I will be recognizing the person by name. I will read the question, and I'll answer the question that's in the chat box. For those that are calling in that don't have Zoom capabilities, you will be in a queue, so to speak. And we will see a phone number, and I'll be saying for the last four digits of the number, for number 1, 2, 3, 4, who might that be? You acknowledge yourself, and then you ask the question, and I'll be answering the question. So everyone will have a chance to participate either via phone, via phone, or through the Zoom chat box. All questions will be answered, and if there's any other questions after that meeting, you can email us at Town Hall or call us at Town Hall, and we will respond immediately to your questions. So let me finish this up, and then we'll move on to the next item. So the annual Budget Town Meeting is Monday, the 10th at 7:00 p.m. Once again, my intention is to hold this in the North Haven High School. There will be a referendum. We will not replicate what we did last year, even though many chief elected officials in towns across the state are advocating for a replay of what happened last year when we just had one of our Board of Finance vote on the budget. This will be an in-person referendum, Tuesday, May 18th, 2021, at the Waverly, Mildred Waverly Recreation Center. Shifting subjects. I want to remind everybody that in April this month, the last two full weeks of April, we will be doing bulk pickup. And the way it works is this month, the weeks of the 19th through the 23rd, and April 26th through the 30th. And I want to remind everybody that all bulk will be picked up on your normally scheduled collection day. So in other words, if your collection day is a Monday for municipal waste and recycles, recyclables, that's the day the bulk goes out. And the same thing throughout the week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. Whoever, whatever portion of town has trash pickup and recyclable pickup, that's the day put the bulk out. Thank you. I wanted to make mention that we've got a lot of good things going on in economic development right now. And next month, I'll be updating you in further detail. But last night, Dr. Keith Churchill, Churchwell and I, we did a virtual ribbon cutting. Keith is the president of the Yale Healthcare System. Dr. Churchwell and I have opened up many of our buildings here in town, but last night was a virtual ribbon cutting. So I wanted to let our residents know about yet another exciting development in town as it relates to healthcare-related services. I'm delighted to announce that the Winchester Center for Lung Disease will now be on Divine Street, in this building you see here. This is an expansion of all of the other services that we've brought into town here through the Yale Healthcare System. This center, the Winchester Lung Disease Center, which will be part of the Yale Healthcare System here in town, is an evaluation and treatment of options for those that may have tuberculosis, emphysema, lung cancer, chronic lung disease, pulmonary function testing, cystic fibrosis, and sarcoidosis. These are very serious lung issues that many people across the country are experiencing right now. This center, we opened it up last night. And on a personal note, ladies and gentlemen, I have to share with you this brief story. So when I first took office, AT&amp;T had vacated the building on 2 Divine Street. And there was, other than health tracks and maybe one or two other things, a lot of empty land and vacant buildings. I had this image in my mind to create this medical epicenter, and that's how the press described it back then. I actually drove the president of Yale Healthcare System and the senior vice presidents around town to look at various locations, and we settled in on Divine Street. Little did I realize at the time that after the emergence of the Urgent Care Center, all these other facilities we've brought in, the high-end animal hospital, a series of cardiology buildings, and then the Smilow Cancer Healthcare Center, little did I realize back then that many of the residents I'm very friendly with here and some close, personal friends of mine would be using these services. As time went on, they contracted various diseases. And time and time again, I hear that it's so nice to have just about a fully integrated level of medical services here in North Haven as opposed to the stress and anxiety of traveling elsewhere for those services. So this will be an exciting development here in town. Before I get to the next subject, two small businesses are opening up in town on Hartford Turnpike, on the corner of Hartford Turnpike and Upper State Street. One is a wonderful coffee shop and bakery. And that is located in the area where Centee's Mostly Meats was years ago. And please visit that. It opened up today. I'm working very closely with the owner of the building, who also owns the package store. And we're soon going to be bringing in there a meat store and a seafood store right in that complex. So that's two examples of small businesses here coming to town. And again, I'll have more on economic development next month. I'd like to recognize also, if you've driven by Town Hall, you'll see the Town Hall that's decorated with pinwheels and signs. April is Child Abuse Prevention Month. And I'd like to acknowledge Mr. and Mrs. Raymond Fowler, who brought this forward here about 11 years ago right now. And through their initiative, year after year after year, we've done this and recognized this, that April is Child Abuse Month. You know, during this pandemic, ladies and gentlemen, all across the country, stress, anxiety has really manifested and permeated itself through our society. And unfortunately, sometimes when that happens, there are these levels of abuse that we see. If you hear anything or you see anything, here's the number for the Department of Children and Families, 1-800-842-2288. Once again, we're recognizing April is Child Abuse Month here in North Haven. I'd like to also announce a couple of Earth Day events that are happening in town. And I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Alan Sturts and Mr. Ed Cohen for their leadership with the Lions Club here in town. Alan and I have been working very closely together, Alan Sturts, and there's going to be a red litter day, RID Litter Day, Saturday, April 10th, with a rain date of April 17th. And the Lions Club, through the leadership of Alan and Ed, they're going to be helping the town clean up Grover Wyman Park on Blakesley Avenue and town fields behind the Gateway Community College, the North Campus there. Volunteers are welcome to join the Lions Club at 10:00 a.m. at Blakesley Park. Boy Scouts and Girl Scouts can work towards merit badges, as you see here, and high school students may earn community service credits. So what we're seeing now, and the Lions Club's a good example, Rotary Club has always been a great example, other organizations, Paulette de Mayo with the Veterans Cleanup on Veterans Day, more and more people are reaching out, trying to help the town and give back to our community. And this is very important here, because what we've seen during the pandemic is sadly an emergence of more and more litter in town. I've actually added, through public works, more and more men and women helping pick up litter, but it seems like they pick it up, and an hour later, there's litter in the same area where they left and they had picked it up. So these initiatives are very, very important. Fran Nataro, a longstanding North Haven resident, reached out for me, and there's a townwide cleanup sponsored by the North Haven Conservation Commission. This is in collaboration with the Peters Rock Association and the North Haven Trail Association and the North Haven Garden Club and Clean Up North Haven. This event will be on Saturday, April 17th, with a rain date of April 24th, from 9:00 to 11:00. The group is meeting at the Town Green at 9:00 a.m. to pick up trash bags and to be assigned a cleanup location. And for those that are part of this and for those that are interested, we suggest you wear comfortable clothes and bring gloves. Another example of a number of groups here giving back to the Town of North Haven, and I greatly appreciate all of the efforts. And that's tonight's presentation, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you.
Great. I just have a couple of comments on your overview. First, I wanted to echo your best wishes for Yale New Haven Hospital with the Winchester Center for Lung Disease. I watched the ceremony on webinar, and I thought that Dr. Churchwell, the president of Yale New Haven Health, and Dr. Passick, who's the director there, gave excellent descriptions. On your list of conditions that would be treated at this lung center, you left out that they also will be dealing with post-COVID-19 issues. And I thought that was very important, and they emphasized that in their remarks, that even people who recover from COVID-19 can have long-term pulmonary effects and that they would be treated there at that facility as well. Bill, did you have a chance to participate in that webinar presentation?
I unfortunately did not.
Yeah.
You know, I definitely, I mean, I think this is great news for the town. My, my father actually had COPD. And even though he didn't die exactly from that, he died from the effects of the medication he was on for a number of years. He gave up smoking, you know, 30, 30 years before he actually passed away. You know, it just shows you that, you know, and also from, you know, from his occupational work in terms of working on a farm and some of the, you know, and in the fields and everything like that, you know, he had lung damage, you know, in addition to smoking. So this is a great thing. I think that, you know, we're, that we have this capability to, that we have this facility, and with this capability in town, you know, I think it's just, it's just a great, a great thing that, you know, that's, you know, as we continue to add to the, as Mike and you have said, to the, you know, to the epicenter over there on Divine Street. This is just another, another important addition to the treatment that our residents can get, you know, without having to go very far.
Yeah, from the description that I heard last night at the ribbon, the virtual ribbon cutting ceremony, that they have over 30, 30 exam rooms, and it is a state-of-the-art facility, probably one of the best in the world right here in our town. It was a very impressive presentation, and so I just wanted to echo your comments on that. Also, I had, I wanted to thank the Lions Club for their RID Litter Day on April 10th and the North Haven Conservation Commission for stepping forward with their fellow sponsors. This is in celebration of Earth Day. Last year was the 50th anniversary of Earth Day, and because we usually have some, lots of events at the high school for Earth Day with the pandemic still in its early stages last year, it was unfortunate that such a milestone, 50 years, was over, you know, bypassed. So 51 is a good number, too. And, you know, you can get out there and get some fresh air and certainly practice social distance, wear a mask and gloves. So I urge people to participate. And, you know, I remember back in 1970 when Earth Day started, I was in 8th grade at Orchard Hill Junior High, which is what you all think of as Gateway, unless you're my age. And then when I entered North Haven High School, I was a member of the Student Environmental Action Group, and we were trying to convince people with tremendous, it was very difficult to recycle. You know, now recycling is so much a part of our lives. And Bill, as Bill will attest, he's addicted to recycling. But back then, you know, it was a struggle for us enthusiastic young high school students who were so excited about Earth Day at North Haven High School. We were the sponsors of the town observances, because it was just in its infancy. And trying to get people to recycle, it took a while for that to catch on. So this is a memorable time for me. And so I hope that folks will participate in either RID Litter Day on the 10th or the Conservation Commission's cleanup on the 17th. So I'm glad you emphasized that and put the information up there. And we need, yeah, we need a seafood store in this town, by the way.
Yeah, and Sally, I think, you know, on the same note that, you know, in terms of cleanup, I mean, the only reason that you need cleanup is people have not taken, that some people, not all people obviously, but certain people have not taken personal responsibility, you know, not to throw their trash out on other people's, you know, on our public streets and on, also on our, on our, on their neighbor's yards. I mean, it's just, you know, unbelievable how much trash that people, you know, still throw out. And I think, you know, that's not, you know, being a good neighbor, it's not acting responsibly. And, you know, I, you know, I try to remember to bring a plastic bag with me or whatever, and I, you know, and pick up some trash every time I walk the dog. Not only in my yard, obviously, but other people's yards, you know, because it blows around and, you know, and it's, it's the right thing to do is, and we wouldn't have to have so much trash pickup because we have trash pickup here in North Haven, I mean, at our houses. So, you know, and I know a lot of these people are not from North Haven. I mean, they're, you know, they're maybe from other towns and, you know, but I think it's everybody's personal responsibility to not litter. And we've been, you know, I think we've had public service messages about this for decades. But, you know, it still, it still happens regularly. And I know it upsets a lot of people, myself included, to continually find cigarette butts and, you know, paper wrappers and trash on my yards and also on our neighbor's yard. So, so please try to, you know, encourage anybody you know, you know, to do exactly the right thing and not, and not litter.
Okay.
Okay.
Now Sally, after, since I've completed that presentation, you had two items you wanted to put on the agenda. I'll turn it over to you.
Yeah, as you said, you've already covered my first item, which was the April 6th budget hearing, but I had more to, besides wanting to encourage people to attend, because again, last year, understandably, the early April budget hearing was canceled because we were in the early stages of trying to figure out what was going on in our lives with the pandemic. And so I want people to remember this, that this is an important stage in the yearly budgetary process. In fact, it is required by Section 705 of our town charter that the Board of Finance, every year, at least 21 days before the Budget Town Meeting, which is in May, May 10th this year, they must have a public hearing where the appropriations are presented. Now Val, you did a great job explaining how to get on the public hearing by Zoom. But then you said, if you don't have a computer, you could phone in, and you had the number, but you said, and then use the same meeting and passcodes that are on the website. Well, if people don't have a computer and they're using the phone, they might not be able to get those, that meeting and passcode. So I would like to just say that the meeting number, if in fact you do phone in, because you don't have computer access, the meeting number, after you phone in, you will be asked to put in the meeting number. And it is 850-98982935. Again, the meeting number is 850-98982935. And then you will also be asked to enter a passcode, which is a six-digit number, 740-741. Again, that's the passcode, is 740-741. And I just wanted, you know, to, if you're using the phone, you have no other place.
Right, no, that's a very valid point.
Yes, and also.
And if anyone needs to call us and ask us if they not, don't have the ability to recall the number, we would be happy to take any phone calls and give the information to them.
Right, because if they just call that number and then are asked to put in that, you know, and they don't have a computer to tell them what those meetings are.
It's a valid point.
You could also look, if you still have your North Haven citizen from last Friday, March 26th, on page A21, the meeting ID and passcode and phone number are there as well in the notice of public hearing that was published. So it's in the, in the paper. And if you do participate by Zoom, you do have computer access, but you've never used Zoom before, which that could very well be, don't be afraid. If I could do it, you could do it. I'm getting pretty decent at it, although I still fumble through sometimes. It's not that hard. Like I said, if I could do it, you could do it. Don't be, it's, you just click on, and there it is. So, and Val gave an excellent description on how to get there by Zoom. So if it is your first Zooming, don't hesitate. So again, I just urge everyone to participate. The other thing that I wanted to bring up under the general topic of April 6th budget hearing is the notice that I referenced that was in the paper. I just wanted to give you a copy of it, Michael. And again, the, the meeting number and passcode are in the top portion. What I'm concerned about with this notice, and, you know, you can just hear me out. Hold on a second here. I, I was very concerned that the numbers are not adding up correctly. They, if you look on the left side of the page, there are, you have different categories of appropriations, general government, public safety, land use, and public works. And those four numbers do in fact have a subtotal. You'll see it there on the bottom on the right, Michael, 26,477,422. And then on the left side, again, there are four categories, health and human services, employee benefits, debt service, and miscellaneous. And those four numbers- numbers total the second subtotal of twenty-six million two sixty-seven three thirty-two. But if you total those up, they do not total the total town government, that's fifty-two million one ten nine fourteen. In fact, they total fifty-two million seven forty-four seven fifty-four. It's off by six hundred and thirty-three thousand eight forty. I've been following the Board of Finance meetings very carefully. I, I understand why that's different, but I'm concerned about the legality of the notice. This is a legal notice of a public hearing. The obligation per charter is to present the town with the appropriations. The four subtotals that make up the total budget of one eleven eight fifty-three seven ninety-four, those four subtotals do add up to that number and correspond appropriately with the three Board of Finance resolutions that were passed at the March 17th meeting. My problem is though, this specific appropriations on the left side in the four categories and on the right side in the four categories are not the right numbers. So what is your feeling on the legality of this notice, given that they don't add up correctly?
Well, the, the bottom line, ladies and gentlemen, is there's going to be no tax increase this year. So the bottom line number that Sally's talking about, which is one hundred and eleven million eight fifty-three, later on in this budget narrative, there's, you'll see a decrement of three hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. I'm going to explain that on April 6th. And then the insurance line item is coming down. And those two components are going to net this down to this one hundred and eleven million dollars. So I'm going to explain that on the 6th.
Right. I, I understand that. The problem is though with, I understand the three thirty-three eight forty with personnel and the three hundred thousand for the insurance. And I know that's what the difference is, but some of these numbers are, the insurance for employees' number already is minus that the three hundred thousand. That's what confuses me. It's, it's unless it's down to seven million two eighty-five.
You're going to see a change.
I didn't see that.
You're going to see a change in that number.
Okay. Well, I also went and because the notice refers folks to picking up a budget at the town clerk's office, I went there today and, and got the, the full budget book. And again, it doesn't match. It doesn't match exactly. It's, it's, it's off. But what I'm concerned about is the Board of Finance made a resolution and this, these figures don't match those resolutions. And they're off by six thirty-three eight forty. So, you know, I just don't want anything legally to go wrong with the process because of a mathematical error. I mean, this is not a, a complicated differential equation or calculus computation. It's addition. I don't know why it's wrong, but it, it is wrong.
So what you're going to see is-
Okay.
You've got to understand this, okay? I'm saying you have to. Everybody understands this, but this is the first hearing, this meeting. Then this budget, after I explain this on the 6th, goes back to the Board of Finance for a final vote later in April. And then on May 10th, that's the next meeting. A mill rate then gets established. So we're going to be voting on, the bottom line here that Sally's talking about, one hundred and eleven million eight fifty-three seven ninety-four, which will, which will be, there'll be no tax increase this year. So I'm not concerned about this. We talked about this with the town attorney, as long as the bottom line number is there.
The bottom, and I, that's why I said, these numbers do match the resolutions.
Yes.
But the purpose in the charter of the hearing is to present at the public hearing. Again, this is a Board of Finance sponsored public hearing. We don't call it, it, they, it's their ballgame. The, the public hearing is, is required to present the proposed appropriations for the ensuing fiscal year. And there's something amiss, you know, I know what it is, but the numbers are, are wrong. But if, if you've already talked to the town attorneys about the wrong amounts being in these specific appropriations somewhere, either here or somewhere else in, in personnel, and they're fine with that because the bottom line matches, then, you know, I just was discouraged.
But those numbers, Sally, those numbers that you're citing
Yeah.
pre, prior to the bottom line, are all going to be adjusted at the next Board of Finance meeting to go to the May 10th meeting. So those line items are going to show the reflections.
Yeah, these different
Yes.
line items. Okay. Well, again, it is presented as if these two subtotals total this total, and they do not. And then that total is one of four components. You know, the, the four components are the town government, Board of Ed, budget, capital and the contingency. Those have always been, for as long as I remember, the four components of our total budget. Those numbers are correct, but the, the appropriations that are being presented for consideration by, at the public hearing for our electors are, are not adding up to that first component. That's all I, I noticed and I just didn't want anything to be invalidated. So I thought I'd bring it to your attention. So that is-
Sally, I think, you know, you know, from, from, you know, all your years that you've been, all the years you've been involved and also I've been involved, you know, that budget book is a work in progress. I think as Mike was saying, and, you know, the, I know, I go back and I look at some of the ones I have and I have, you know, progressive dates on them that indicate that, you know, changes were made or corrected or whatever. So I think as Mike was saying, even though maybe the, you know, the revised page six I can see online right now, having the advantage of being at home, you know, the, the other budget book needs to be fixed or whatever. And I think as part of the meeting, the meeting on April 6th and then the subsequent Board of Finance, I think as we get to the, the actual May 10th meeting, we'll have a updated budget, you know, overall budget book that has, you know, the complete numbers in them that are, that all add up correctly.
Right. Now, I, I certainly acknowledge it is a work in progress, but let's distinguish between the, the, the public hearing, which is where the Board of Finance presents its appropriations to the electors and the annual budget town meeting in, in May. They really serve two different functions. And I do acknowledge that it is a work in progress. But the resolutions as passed were for specifically to recommend this, these figures to the public hearing. And the notice again has a major mathematical error, but the bottom line is the correct amount. So that's why I wanted to stress that. So I think we can move on. I had my second item. What was it? Oh, yes. This is something I've been meaning to ask you about for a while, Michael, because I, I noticed a legal ad a while ago on this. Is our, maybe two or three months ago, there was a legal ad about the daycare center going out to bid.
Yeah, it was about six weeks ago or so.
Okay. It's a couple, I knew, and I've been meaning to, and I, you know, again, been drowning in budget numbers the past, so I forgot to bring it up. So can you, is the daycare center, which is, operates at the rec center, closing?
Yes.
Okay.
So let me explain. First of all, let me say that the daycare center here in town was losing almost a quarter million dollars a year. The daycare center is funded by the state, but the town picks up other expenses that were annualized at about a quarter of a million dollars a year. But during the pandemic, what we noticed was that the, there was a decline in membership. That was the first step that happened. Second step was that we were informed that a couple of our key people in the daycare center were retiring. And we had a lack of talented, skilled, qualified, licensed people to run the center. And we, by the way, are only one of two municipalities in the state that do this, ourselves and I think Enfield's the other city. Nobody else does this internally. So what we did, and I was directly involved with this, because I have the relationships with the commissioners at the state level, we spoke with the state, we informed them of our intentions, we explained the reasons why, and we worked collaboratively with them to create a RFP, the same one that Sally's referring to, to go out to bid. And the concept was designed to, which the state agreed to, was to take the state money, money that's available to us every year, less the quarter of a million dollars, or not, not including the quarter of a million that we spend. And the state agreed that they were going to fund the winning bidder on a daycare center. So we put it out and we were surprised, ladies and gentlemen, that nobody bid on it. And we don't know the reasons why. We went back to the state, we worked out a plan. We gave all the parents, there were like sixteen families left, I believe, sixteen to twenty families in that, in that area with, with one child. The parents understood. We didn't have the staff to run it and we gave the parents ample notice and the parents have found other daycare centers either in town or in a surrounding town to place their children. So March 31st was the last day for the daycare center. We couldn't effectively run it. We'd have to people. And putting aside the quarter of a million dollars lost every year, which we subsidized for the program, it was just something that we couldn't do anymore and the state understood.
So yesterday was-
The last day.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
I'm surprised, you know, a lot of unemployed folks, that there was no, no one, no, you said no qualified people to fill the vacancies created by, you said retirements?
Because, because the state funds it, there are special requirements and certifications that we have to have.
Was there any federal funding in that?
No.
No, it was just state. Okay.
Right. So-
There's federal funding at the senior center?
Yes.
I think that's what I was, okay.
What I, what I planned to do also was if there were families that had children, they couldn't find another daycare center, I was willing to go month by month on this, but we found that they all had found various locations, with the exception of one family, but the, but the mother was not working, so she just was watching the child. And she was fine with that, from what our director told us. So, so that's the story, ladies and gentlemen, on daycare center.
Because I know that, I've been reading in the paper about the, as part of the 1.9 trillion stimulus American Rescue Plan Act, there's quite a large number going into childcare
Right.
in the state. And there's nothing trickling our way.
Well, we always have to-
But you say they're all, the folks are all gone.
They're all, they're all in different locations. And by the way, ladies and gentlemen, we have many daycare centers here in town. And, you know, in, in some respects, we were competing with the private daycare centers, which we did for years here. But in the end, what Sally's just talking about, some of those daycare centers would perhaps be eligible for that funding at the federal level. So it was just something that we couldn't effectively manage anymore.
Okay. Well, I, again, I, I try to pay attention to those legal ads and I noticed it and I
Yep.
appreciate the information.
You're welcome.
Okay.
So as we move forward with this agenda, I'm going to ask Sally to read item five, Bill, six and seven. And Sally, you can come back on item eight.
Okay. So I am up for number five, which is our fair housing resolution for the town of North Haven. You ready, folks? Here we go. Whereas all persons are afforded a right to full and equal housing opportunities in the neighborhood of their choice and federal fair housing laws require that all individuals, regardless of race, color, religion, sex, handicap, familiar status or national origin, be given equal access to all housing related opportunities, including rental and homeownership opportunities, and be allowed to make free choices regarding housing location. And Connecticut Fair Housing laws require that all individuals, regardless of race, creed, color, national origin, ancestry, sex, marital status, age, lawful source of income, familiar status, learning disability, physical or mental disability, sexual orientation, be given equal access to all housing related opportunities, including rental and homeownership opportunities, and be allowed to make free choices regarding housing location. And the town of North Haven is committed to upholding these laws and realizes that these laws must be supplemented by an affirmative statement publicly endorsing the right of all people to full and equal housing opportunities in the neighborhood of their choice. Now therefore, be it resolved that the town of North Haven hereby endorses a fair housing policy to ensure equal opportunity for all persons to rent, purchase, obtain financing and enjoy all other housing related services of their choice on a non discriminatory basis as provided by state and federal law. And be it further resolved that the chief executive officer of the town of North Haven or his, or his designated representative is responsible for responding to and assisting any person who alleges to be the victim of an illegal discriminatory housing practice in the town of North Haven and for advising such person of, person of the right to file a complaint with the State of Connecticut Commission on Human Rights and Opportunities, CHRO, or the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, HUD, or to seek assistance from the Connecticut Fair Housing Center, Legal Services or other fair housing organizations to protect his or her right to equal housing opportunities. So I will make those resolutions as read.
Okay. Thank you, Sally. We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
William, item number six.
Thank you, Mike. Item number six is consider and act upon a resolution recommending a $2 million appropriation and bond authorization for the milling and paving of town roadways consisting of milling and removal of waste materials, paving and materials, installation of manholes and drainage risers, traffic protection, including signage and police and flag personnel. I don't know if the, does, Mike, did you want to add anything or Sally?
Yeah. So this is-
Yeah.
Before I resolve.
This is the, the same bond resolution that was voted on at the Board of Finance meeting last year. We didn't pave last year because of the pandemic and other problems we had. So this is the same $2 million.
Right. That, that was my question on this. I, again, similar to my concern about the addition error in the legal notice, you know, I'm, I'm always looking out for proper process and I-
We, we vetted this out thoroughly with bond counsel Glenn Rybacki.
Right. Okay. But the-
As long, as long as the existing Board of Finance members were the same as last year's vote
Okay.
and were doing the same roads that we didn't do last year.
Right.
He said, we're fine.
Okay.
If there was one Board of Finance member that had changed, we'd have to do this back at the Board of Finance.
Right. I looked, I went backwards because I couldn't remember when they did it and I found that it was on August, the August 19th, 2020 meeting. And they did unanimously vote to recommend the, the $2 million for milling and paving. The only thing that, that bothered me is that, and why I'm bringing this up at all, is because in the minutes from that meeting, it states that there will be a special town meeting on September 22nd, 2020, for residents to vote on this. This meaning the resolution for the $2 million in milling and paving. So I was wondering if that specific reference to that town meeting had any impact on the resolution that was passed by the Board of Finance going stale, if you will. Because when we met on September 3rd and we called the town meeting for 9/22, we did not, and our, our call for the meeting did not include that bonding in there. And in fact, of course, that meeting got postponed to September 29th because there was a, a, a budget transfer oversight that Mrs. Barrett found and we had it extended. But even at that ultimate meeting on September 29th, it did not, it did not happen, as you say. So you're not concerned that the Board of Finance's resolution from seven or eight months ago, which specifically referenced the September town meeting, you're not concerned that it, it is stale in any way?
We had a concern, but that concern
Yeah, okay.
was totally eliminated by our bond counsel.
Right, right. I, I just wanted, I, so I'm having the same concern you did. The reason why it is so important is because according to our town charter, we cannot borrow without the recommendation of the Board of Finance. They don't really need our recommendation, even though- They don't really need our recommendation, even though our call, we are going to be recommending it. The only recommendation in the town charter is from the Board of Finance. So that coupled with the date reference to the September town meeting, which never dealt with the milling and paving, made an alarm go off in my head. So it must have gone off in yours, and
It did.
And so there was no need because there was no change in the membership?
That's exactly right.
Okay, so if there was a change in the membership...
And if this was $2 million, we'd have to go back to the Board of Finance.
Right, I got it, okay. Well, again, I'm just trying, you know, I can't talk to you about this ahead of time, I have to talk to you about it here.
That's fine, yeah.
I had the same concern, obviously, that you did, so...
As did Valerie, too.
Okay, so we're all paying attention.
We are, yes, we are.
All right, so is Bill going to...
Yes.
Yeah, Sally, it's, I think it's good that, that you routinely ask this, just as a double check. But I think as you know from all the years that we've both been involved, Mike, Mike, Mike definitely has the same thought process that you do and I do, and, including, you know, on this item here, making sure that he did check with legal counsel on it.
Okay.
So I think, you know, it's good that you double check just for that reason, so I appreciate you doing that. And then I, on the other hand, I appreciate Mike, you know, consistently, for all these years being actually on top of it for exactly the, the same reasons that you bring it up.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Well, we've had to redo a few things over the years, but generally...
Not too bad.
We're doing okay.
Right.
So...
And that's why, that's why I stopped before I did seven, in case, you know, for exactly that reason, because I thought you might want to ask that.
Yeah.
Okay.
That type of question or whatever.
All right, so we're ready for number seven?
Number seven.
I think that's, was assigned to you.
So, thank you, Sally, and thank you, Mike. So based on that discussion, resolve that the Board of Selectmen recommends that the Town of North Haven appropriate $2 million for the milling and paving of town roadways. The project shall consist of milling and removal of waste materials, paving and materials, installation of manholes and drainage risers, traffic protection, including signage and police and flag personnel. The appropriation may be spent for design, demolition, and construction costs, equipment, furnishings, materials, site improvements, survey costs, architects' fees, engineering fees, other consultants' fees, legal fees, net temporary interest in other financing, I'm sorry, other financing costs, and other expenses related to the project. The town, and that the town issue bonds or notes, and temporary notes in an appropriate, I'm sorry, in an amount not to exceed $2 million to finance the appropriation. That's one long sentence.
Yes, that's, I will second that one long resolution.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion and we have a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sally, you're up for number eight.
Yes, oh, good, all right. This is the call for this, number eight is the call for a special town meeting on Tuesday, April 20th, that should be 2021? Whoops. At 5, I guess the bond guys missed that. April 20th, 2021, at 5:00 PM, held electronically via internet and telephone access for the following purposes. One, to consider and vote upon town acceptance of the following road, Mikey's Way. Two, to consider and act upon the recommendations of the Board of Finance and the Board of Selectmen. A, to appropriate $2 million for the milling and paving of town roadways. The project shall consist of milling and removal of waste materials, paving and materials, installation of manholes and drainage risers, traffic protection, including signage and police and flag personnel. The appropriation may be spent for design, demolition, and construction costs, equipment, furnishings, materials, site improvements, survey costs, architects' fees, engineering fees, and other consultants' fees, legal fees, net temporary interest in other financing costs, and other expenses related to the project. B, to issue bonds or notes of the town in amount not to exceed $2 million. To provide that the, that the amount of bonds or notes authorized to be issued shall be reduced by any grants received for the project. C, to issue temporary notes of the town in amount not to exceed $2 million in anticipation of such bonds or notes. D, to determine or authorize the First Selectman and the Treasurer of the town to determine the amounts, dates, interest rates, maturities, redemption provisions, forms, and other details of the bonds or notes, and to perform all other acts which are necessary appropriate to issue the bonds or notes. E, to take such action to allow temporary advances of available funds, which the town reasonably expects will be reimbursed from the proceeds of borrowings, and to authorize the First Selectman and the Treasurer to bind the town pursuant to such representations and covenants as they deem necessary or advisable in order to maintain the continued exemption from federal income taxation or of interest on the bonds or notes authorized by the resolution if issued on a tax-exempt basis, including covenants to pay rebates or of investment earnings to the United States in future years. F, to authorize the First Selectman and the Treasurer to make representations and enter into written agreements for the benefit of holders of the bonds or notes to provide secondary market disclosure information, which agreements may include such terms as they deem advisable or appropriate in order to comply with applicable laws or rules pertaining to the sale or purchase of such bonds or notes. And G, this is the last one, folks, I promise, to authorize the First Selectman, the Treasurer, and other proper officers of the town to take all other action which is necessary or desirable to complete the project, and to issue bonds or notes to finance the aforementioned appropriation.
Very good.
Yeah.
And you're not even out of breath, that was...
G is the catch-all, yes. Only, only an attorney could have written that, folks, I assure you of that, being one, I can tell you that.
All right, is there a motion to accept?
Well, we're, we're calling.
You're calling.
I, I just wanted to comment on Mikey's Way. This is, we, we dealt with a, a bond release last month, and there was a condition about Mikey's Way being approved by the town, so...
That's correct.
I remember if we were, I, I mentioned if we were doing it backwards, but this is fine. Where is this, Mikey's Way, can I ask that?
It's off of...
It's off of North Hill Road.
Oh, up there.
It's like behind the back of St. Teresa, it's a new road back there, nice, very nice development.
Right, so I do remember this as a part and parcel of, of one of our five bond releases that we did last, last month.
That's right.
Exactly.
Okay.
That's right.
So...
And just so you know, Sally
Yes.
the procedural aspect of many governments, including this one, is that many times the contractor will want the bond released right away. But in this government, and many others, until we take the road, through the residents voting to take the road, the bond remains in our finance department until it gets approved at the town meeting.
So I will make a motion to call the special town meeting as read.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second Sally's motion.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second, any other discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And in case you forgot, because of that exciting reading that I did, that was April 20th of 2021.
Yes, okay.
At 5 o'clock, okay.
William, you, would you like to do number nine?
The other thing I think Sally's heard too, just, which I think will then be posted to the, you know, town website. And again, one of the advantages of being online, looking at the town calendar, is I think now that we've, we've called for the special, you know, and approved the special town meeting, the call-in number will be posted on the, on the town website.
Right, yeah, I think it's great that there's a lot of information on the website, but again, many of our dedicated citizens who care greatly about our town do not have computer access, so I always like to just repeat.
Yes, and they're always welcome to call in, we're always here to answer questions and give the information.
And we get the calls, we getting over 100 calls a day, as I said last time, sometimes 150 calls, so we're in a constant public comment mode, not only in, in the town here, but on email, Facebook, and, you know, with Facebook Messenger, so, anyway. Let's move to item number nine, William.
Yep.
And next on the agenda is appointment, appointments and resignations. I'll move the resignation of the Reverend Wayne Lavender, 90, Julian Drive, Hampden, Connecticut, 06518, from the Community Services Commission, term to expire December 31st, 2022.
Yes, with, with regret, I will accept that resignation. I think Reverend Lavender did an excellent job on the Community Services Commission, but I will second that motion for accepting his resignation.
So before we move on that, I'd like to thank Reverend Lavender. He and I really developed a very, very solid relationship down through the years. He did a wonderful job at the church here on Route 22, and our friendship had blossomed such that he is an adjunct professor at Quinnipiac University, and had me speak to one of his classes just before the pandemic, and that was a tremendously rewarding experience for me. And Wayne, thank you very much, we will miss you on this, on this commission, thank you for everything.
What was the class?
It was a class of both government and business.
Okay.
Wayne knew that I came from the corporate business career, but he also knew, of course, my position here, so I was able to connect with a lot of those students that day, and actually after that, several reached out for me.
Hmm, great.
Okay, so we have a motion, we have a second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for that vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, next.
And, yes, I will make a motion for the appointment of Mary Ann Hardy, 37 Bracket Farm Road, to the Community Services Commission to fill the unexpired term of Reverend Wayne Lavender, term to expire December 31st, 2022. I know Mary Ann, and I have every confidence that she will participate in a positive way to the Community Services Commission.
Yeah, Bill, we have a motion, a second, and I'd like to comment on Mary Ann, is there a second?
Yeah, I'll, I'll second that Sally's motion to appoint Mary Ann Hardy.
I would concur with Sally on that, and Mary Ann is also on our library board, very focused in terms of helping the town. There's a letter here in the packet that she sent to me. Mary Ann, I heartily endorse, endorse this with you, and thank you for stepping up and willing to do this. So we have a motion, we have a second, any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, I think...
Number 10, I will move for the approval of the property tax refunds listed in our agenda.
I'll second Sally's motion on the refunds.
All right, so we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All right, hearing none, we'll call for that vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, thank you, Sally and William, for reading those very long resolutions, I certainly appreciate it, thank you. Item 11, the next meeting of our Board of Selectmen will be here on Thursday, May 6th, at 7:00 PM. And we're getting close, ladies and gentlemen, we're getting close to having people come back to these meetings, so just bear with us. I look forward to seeing everyone on April 6th, at the town meeting, or the town hearing for the budget, and I'll leave you with this. I recently did a PSA, Public Service Announcement, now on the town Facebook and website pages, talking about where we are in this pandemic, and stressing, let's not get complacent. We're almost there, ladies and gentlemen, we're almost there, continue to wear the masks, continue to do the social distancing, more and more people are getting vaccinated, so I said in the Public Service Announcement, I appreciate North Haven and their patience during this past 13 months. Thank you very much for your patience, and thank you for being such wonderful citizens here in the Town of North Haven. With that being said, entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
I'm assuming there's no further discussion on that, so we'll call for that vote, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, thank you very much, and we'll see you next week, ladies and gentlemen, thank you.
The preceding program is brought to you in part through a grant from the Town of North Haven. Watch town meetings or other videos on demand at nhtv.com.